Right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March Asbury Town Council Full Meeting. Well, thank you all for being here. And those that are watching, thank you for your patience and welcome to all councillors. First of all, apologies for any absences.
Yeah, we've got councillor Bond and councillor Taylor.
Okay, thank you. And item three, any declarations of interest?
Yep, I have a thoroughly interested in what you're saying.
And about their comments. Okay. Item four, public participation, ten minutes. Anyone would like to bring against the note or raise questions?
Your second, I'll propose.
Oh, sorry. Councillor. Praise up, back open.
Any votes?
We can vote on that, please.
Sorry, I don't.
We're voting to go into public participation.
Yes, please, sorry.
I just wanted to say thank you. I don't think we really, you know, in January, it was possible. But it actually seems after all these years, some of the outstanding things like the list have actually been since we talked about the government. So I would just like to thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I think, I think that's more a reflection on, on the staff and the thoughts from that.
Well, we're getting there.
Yeah, but no, thank you. It has been outstanding for a long time, obviously. So see something that is good. Like, I'm telling you.
No worries.
Of course, it's great. Any other questions at this stage? If not, you, you've got the opportunity at the end of, of the meeting as well, to go through the meeting. If anything comes up, you've got the opportunity to raise questions then as well. So, thank you. Moving on to item five minutes of town council meeting held on the fifth of February. Has anyone got any comments?
Yeah, can Sharon, can I just ask, there's no minutes for the below the line items?
It's in the, is it in the purple? I think it's in the purple.
Okay, so no members of the public, we will be doing anything even adaptive minutes on that. It was just, what, what my emails went down, I finished the half minutes. So I haven't seen them again, except for the many did since when our emails went offline.
Okay, um, I think so. There's two sets, yeah. One's one for the public, which should be in your papers.
My public should know, wasn't, we are discussing them online within reason.
Yes, within reason, yeah. Hopefully that is worded okay, but if you have a problem.
Will they be made public for that, for that, for that minutes?
Not, not, not with the detail that's in them.
No, but we will have something there for members of the public after moments of.
Yeah, yeah, they, they will be made public once approved them in the form that they are, without giving any sense to people.
That's okay, it's just I wasn't anything.
Yeah.
I can't, that's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, cover closer second out to three minutes of town council meeting in February, so council rugby, council day.
Yeah.
And vote.
Yeah, unanimous.
Uh, minutes of the U G M on the chat, I think, for seconds and against the three. Other. Second up. After, yes, and vote please.
Okay, majority, one of us each. Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to nineteen six financial matters. And six A, authorized payments, acceptance in people's comments. Councillor. Miss Taylor.
Although I was hoping that somebody else would notice. Actually, I was hoping that all members would have noticed that. I'm not one of, like, there is a quite substantial bill in that.
Yep, trailer.
What?
Trailers.
We now with the phone, we don't.
We're starting this.
Yes.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't know.
Oh, we're, oh, we're waiting for that.
Yeah.
Would work that, thank you.
Who's doing that? I.
Yeah.
Yes, it's.
Payments, we're on payments at the moment, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so can I pass on to host payments?
Um, we've got, councillor Taylor has proposed it, we just need a second there.
Anyone?
Anyone?
That's a good.
Yeah.
No, I can't vote.
Unanimous.
The agreed by the limits, then acceptance. Agree on.
That's just going to be.
Well, I let councillor Taylor go first and then.
I'm, I'm, I'm just like, obviously it's substantial and I'm thinking that's been addressed and there's been things like, that's a one off experience.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
It's not a one off experience.
We have the January bill come in as well.
Well, that's going to be another one.
That only came in today. Uh, it'll be uh, two thousand one hundred and seven.
Together, all together.
No, no. No, extra, until such time as we have discovered it. And then obviously we've checked the February bill and it is now all the payment, all the charges are nought now because we put restrictions on it. But the fact is that we didn't have any restrictions and so the data unfortunately.
Obviously it's data use.
Data usage, no, definitely, yeah.
But.
It, it, it is an issue that we will discuss.
And, yeah.
There's no doubt about it. Yes. How it happens, we, we need to, yes, please.
So, but transparency purposes, um, something I did not say, but this is being dealt for internal processes that are very difficult to be too open about detail. But councillors will be making way of the detail in due course. But internal processes need to take place first um, in the expectation that some, all of that money will be recouped. But as and when that information can become available to councillors, it will happen. But that additional bit of information will probably.
It only came in the afternoon, sorry, just not having had the chance to tell you.
But it will be dealt with as a person, the chair of this.
Yeah.
And we will see that to councillors and when.
Okay, thank you. Look, enough time for Chair of Personal Committee to deal with that. Um, again, for, for the public, um, it's an internal issue, um, we'll resolve it. Yeah. It's, it's, it, it's not as traumatic as perhaps you might think it might be, but, um, but yeah, it, it, it's just, it's a procedural issue that, that's concerned. So can I go back to the group that it's.
Yeah, Sam says she's proposed it.
Councillor, I'm turned up, councillor Ashby, thank you.
Yeah, unanimous.
Uh, receiving them for that instance in preview. Everyone happy with that? Councillor, voting.
Yeah, so.
Also, procedure to second vote.
Unanimous, thank you.
Uh, check that for information. Any queries? No, thank you. Um, extended chair, January twenty twenty four, um, information, any queries? Let's see. I don't think we're in a bad position, um. It's all looking pretty good.
Sixty one percent of extended chair so far, they're in control, yeah.
So, anyone got any queries? No? And.
In two hundred and six, seven weeks, and I did his foundation years, obviously, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Okay, six F, subscription to Learn Your Act Service, monthly fee, one hundred and five pounds, your last patient.
Yeah.
You want to expand on that more?
Well, um, yeah, i- in the light of the, uh, you know, the need, I think, for health and safety and H R support, um, I have explained already to the council, I think that that is very good value for money. And we've already seen, um, you know, how they have been operating and I'm really quite impressed. If I have a query with them, they're there on hand as soon as, you know, they pick up the phone. Um, if they're not uh, available, they call me back very soon afterwards and with a, a follow up call as well. Um, I've got some appointments set up for the right, right H R package. So they will take me through the whole portal and what it's completely capable of. It's got, um, there, I, I, I think about sixty training videos, which are three minute, you know, little, um, one bite wonders. Um, so they will be given to the appropriate people, whether they're councillors and staff. Um, and what I think is remarkable is they've got a, a backup system uh, whereby if anybody does have a mental health issue or really worried about something, they have a twenty four seven hotline. You just call it three in the morning if you want to and somebody will pick up the phone, which for, you know, particularly with the staff, particularly with the one. Yeah, interesting.
Good question. Yeah, it's sort of.
I've had a long conversation again, where I was chatting with us now, and having a long conversation with our cover this. Things excellent values money, uh, provides, um, development support for the staff. And just as important, size consistency, there are tailored policies on there. Um, that have been drawn down. So we know that we've got the most up to date policies that are correct, um, references to legislation that are available. Um, as and when there's any further advice on health and safety, H R, et cetera. It's there, but the telephone, which I think is fantastic, but a hundred and eighty five pound mark, so it doesn't matter here. That is unbelievably good debate from a nationally recognised organisation, a commensurate. Um, it's a bit of a no brainer, the spark was already, I think, one of the reasons why this came about was identified by a number of policies that were right and non existent, or okay. This helps still have a point of advice, like with the reassurance she needs, she's doing the right thing.
Yeah.
I mean, my, my comment, um, my point is, um, is some people are concerned a lot of money, but we are a long foundation, we are a business, we try to run certain elements of the ten. Um, and that's, that's a business, that's what you need to do. You know, you need to have that insurance, you need to have that advice. We've seen what's happened in the past when that didn't happen and, um, it, it cost us very dearly. So I, you, you, this in my mind, it's nothing, this is construction. So, you know, it's, it's no brain, so. Anyone want to pose? What's the doubt? Second up, councillor, that's Taylor, we have great needs.
Unanimous.
Okay, moving on to item seven, consider. What do you want to say?
Well, you know, I was just, you know, not, carry on.
Yeah, we've got the money there.
I was fucking, yes, I was down at the moment, I'd have them out, please.
Um, it's item seven, to consider an emergency access road three G where you want to sign. For the three G pitch construction along the Calvinge Bay Fields. Now, we've asked this council, we've emailed, um, people considered this, I've put my, my thoughts into it, but I'd like to know for discussion with councillors.
Can I just add something?
Yes.
Something I discovered today. Um, when we sort of looked at this, obviously mid meeting, um, you know, on the face of it, it's a lot, you know, we've sort of like, we, we passed it by the consultants who were really, you know, helping us create Jubilee Wood and they initially didn't have a problem. But something uh, that I was looking into was, um, when they, um, actually have the, the route going into the back of the school, that will involve some hedge or possible hedge and tree removal, which then would cause an issue. And it may be that um, that may involve a planning application, I'm told, having spoken to Hill today.
That's.
Exactly, yeah. No, that isn't for you.
We would want to see anything that applies by edge wise and.
Yeah.
Yeah, new plant would be in place, but as far as planning and costs and anything.
Yeah.
I don't think that's something that we need to worry about. I think we just need to worry about whether or not we're going to let them do this.
Yeah.
I think, in my point of view, personal, um, also also professional, um, access of Queens Road is not going to happen, I would suggest. Highways will not accept that. Um, and it's a very long route.
Hmm.
And who's going to pay for it? Um, secondly, in the outline application for Norwood Road, there is the acceptance and access point from that development to go into that triangle of bitter land, which as a council, we've accepted in principle and therefore I'd suggest that is the most obvious point of view, but we need to talk to the farmer. We can use our hand set upon. And then thirdly, it's using this temporary construction access boat. Yes, council.
I'm just going to reiterate, none of those are actually our concern. What we're being asked is whether or not we will allow them through our land, how they are managing it, how they are funding it, who they need to request permission from is none of our concern. As long as they do it, that's, that, our concern is whether or not we'd say yes or no, and that's really the only thing we need to consider. Is my opinion on it?
No, no, absolutely. And, and, and totally agree.
Just reaffirm what Pastor Ted said, that, that's all we need to focus on for the other intricacies and then other bits and bobs that need to be done. That's what someone has to worry about. We just want to concentrate on the question that we're being asked.
Absolutely. So, I totally agree in principle, if you want to cross our land, yes.
This is what I've been saying again, I need some help with this.
What, what I'm, what I'm concerned about is there doesn't seem to be a solution to make this happen. And that's why I'm putting these thought processes in and quite rightly, you could argue, it's nothing to do with, but, but we've already, we've already invested quite a bit of money and therefore we should have the opportunity to put in what solutions are, because I don't think Breton, and I don't know if they've spoken to our ways at all.
Again, that's not how, that all we, we are being asked a specific question, which is a yes, no answer. Whether they put right afterwards or when, that obvious, we're just being asked a yes, no answer. It's not really, they may have a solution and they've just not shared it with us because all they want to know is at this stage, at this moment in time, can they cross our land? And that's really.
But the other solution that.
We shouldn't be second guessing highways, we shouldn't be second guessing Breckland Council and Wilford County Council. That's not what we're being asked to do at this moment in time. And really, we shouldn't be doing anything publicly, second guessing colleagues that we intend to work with down the line. But we should just be concentrating on the yes, no question we're being asked.
That's your proposal.
I'm happy we have the discussion on the yes, no, whether or not we're going to let them knock on the logistics of it. He said no, sorry.
No, 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 sorry. First of all, then you can go.
What would be the disadvantages of us saying?
I, i- in my discussion, sorry.
No, that was the same question, so.
In my discussion, I am not saying no, I'm trying to find the solution to get access.
Oh, no, I totally understand that.
They, the only access solution they've come up with is off Queen's Road. It's not going to happen. Therefore, what's the next access point? But, 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 that's a question.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, it's tangible, what councillor Taylor said, and, and yeah, I totally agree with you, we've got one question. But if we say no to that question, what is the knock on effect to that? We don't know what we're doing.
I, 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 I'm not saying or suggesting that the town council, we say no, you can, yes, you can use our land. What I'm concerned about is they have no access solution. That's what worries me.
Oh, yeah.
Use our land, absolutely. Because it is a community solution. We pushed, put, I will say this, we as town council pushed, put three G pitch on there. The fact that they're now thinking how to construct it, it's a bit of an issue. It's like, how can we help? What advice do you need? What, what can we do to make that happen? I'm, I'm certainly not trying to put obstacles in the way that it's not going to work. It's like, need a solution, but I've spoken to our mates, what they said, I've been thought outside box and spoken to Hill, we've spoken to them. You will not get an access off Queen's Road.
You cannot sit there and say that.
Yes.
It's like, yeah, you can't because you, I do not have the authority. So you cannot sit here and say that.
That is, transport, as a transport.
You cannot say it, because you do not have the authority.
No, as an individual, as an individual.
Please, you stop saying.
Okay, as an individual, I am saying it's highly unlikely it would happen. I'm not saying it's a town. As a, as a town council, it's not going to happen. I can't say that. You're quite right, councillor Taylor. I'm giving you my view now to councillors as to, that was put forward. This is my personal point of view, my professional point of view, not a political point of view, not our chairman's point of view or town council point of view. And if that doesn't work, what could we do? Councillor.
Right, so my personal point of view is that I can make a proposal that we agree and then we can have a further conversation about the wise way of this and worry about may or might not happen in the future.
Happy that, I'm sorry, I'll second that, right, counter answer. Sorry, did you?
Yes, that was the one word, I totally agree with that. But could we ask to be kept informed what their proposed solutions are so that we know what they're planning to do?
I'd like to.
Yes, sorry, you can bring the many more.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very happy with that.
Okay, so, yeah, unanimous, yes, fine.
And again, just, just to reiterate, what I was saying is not in my view as town council, it's what I see to try and resolve this solution, get this pitch built under our problems and, and what we, we give it, there's something professionally that doesn't work, or it's worth over it professionally.
I'm not going to, it's a.
No, 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 no.
No, no, we are not the other way.
No, 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 we're not. But let, let's try and work with them to find a solution. Absolutely. And there are other ways to find a solution. And it might be if we commit off Norwood Road down on this plan, that's a difference.
He's not going to want, we, we hasn't allowed it, we asked.
And we put in, it's going to cost a lot of money. And again, that's Jubilee Woods in terms of accessing it. There are other things, yeah, that we feel. Okay, no, thank you very much for that, for our constructive discussion. Yes, we want, I would like to say advocate and want to do everything to make sure that this project works. That, that's, that's the end. Um, okay, item eight, councillors' thoughts. The one, like, two. How some can.
It's not as cool, I'm just going to offer my services to run the book second again, because that's coming up in April, so we've only got a few weeks. Um, if anybody else wants it, find it. If not, I'm happy to do it. And again, I should be sending out the begging letters for help and assistance. And, but just with your.
I think you, you'd be sending me now to all this and if we've got connections with other people.
Yeah, well, I, I have a few of my, few of my usual helpers ask me if, if indeed it is. And I've said, well, yeah, I'll, I'll carry on tonight, finally we'll be running it. As long as everybody's happy with that and.
Anyone, don't need.
Help us.
Any comments on that or objections? No, but no, thank you, um. Thank you very much to do that. It, it's a big job and.
With your wish, we are, and oh, oh, yes, we'll forward what help I need, but I'll post this and things like that.
Yeah, involving, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Any other, so, council.
Um, so I haven't really done much at town council level. Um, physical level, I suppose, I'd tell you, probably does come under both hats. We've had quite a few site meetings, councillor Rush, he's also been on Bill Lane this, this last month, since our last meeting with residents. We've lobbied our M P to come out and look in the sisters, we've found flooding on Bill North Road, um, which actually was quite good, that come facilitated the meeting within five days. And we had that meeting with the head of Anglia Morgan's, our sewage branch of Anglia Water, Victoria, somebody, I don't know, councillor Susan, can't hear that there. Um, which actually led to work on New North Road following, the following week. They've done instead I worked there and actually found a collapsed drain, which has been flooding gardens and people's homes. Um, and we tended over to scrutiny and through council vote at Breckland over to scrutiny. Um, was the Inspire and Communities Fund, which thankfully went through because that is an amazing budget that Breckland do that helps all of our commuting. If any of you do follow the Apple Community page and Black Dated page, obviously their mental health and wellbeing courses that were free to attend and are always advertised. And having attended somewhere would say they are really good courses and anyone, anyone can apply to go on them. And we think there is one this Friday, uh, the twelfth Friday, the fourth, is it? At the Scout Hub. And there's also one in Deirun on the seventh, which I'm hoping to attend for. It's my son's birthday, so I'm troubling still. But that's about all I've done this month, it's enough, it's meetings. And hopefully there'll be some good news going to residents shortly, I'll tell you that, that's on the middle line, so.
Thank you, yes.
Can I, this, again, can I just thank our district councillors for running this, but helping out on a practical level when things happen by the town council, but the district councillors are really full of that stops and liaising, and I just want to say a big thank you to them.
Yeah, absolutely, totally endorse that.
Sure.
You know, I would like you know, the effort you've all put in. Um, because you're on a better platform to do that than, than we are. So, absolutely. Um, just in terms of updates from the South, I'm changing with town far, and it's Deputy Chair, Five Market Towns, team's meeting the other day, um, which was interesting. Uh, basically, it was just an update on our proposals for review of the local plan. And I'd like to discuss with Breckland integrating that local plan and the A D P, that's a big part of our ship. Um, to make sure it's all coordinated before the brief goes out, and we have a meeting in the final highlights earlier. And, and, and that was. earlier, and, and, and that was the group to do that, but I'd like to bring you back to fourth county. So you were all involved in that, um, and also an update on, we're developing a brief for the cemetery land, please go on, study. Because again, that might ask questions in terms of outside development, down the outside local plan and fourth sites, so those are the two big issues um, we put forward, and so we could break them with you know, um grateful for those updates, but the same, what I'd like to do on those two big issues is prove them back for council. If, if you're all agreeing with the R N A provisions, um, but yeah, maybe, maybe with some updates, um, um, to discuss, so any other councillors or if not, we'll leave on to our.
Do you want me to, do you want me to read it out, or do you want me to, uh, because obviously we can.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I don't mind.
Very.
It's through there.
You can have a study, just a quick summary chance, and the rest is, no, what's it, okay.
Um, right, okay, um, well, following the open spaces, um, sorry, I'll have to start from I think I've just got one page here, page missing, hang on. I thought that was odd, yeah, I'm sorry, I've got it now, yeah, yeah, thank you, um, yeah, um flooding in outer borough, obviously, uh, perhaps the tailor has, uh, covered that, but we've also, um got some new lighting which is being installed at the culvert on Mill Road to assist any volunteers to safely clear the trash screen, um, which is good news, so that is going ahead, um. I think that that might be being installed possibly this Thursday, uh, if I'm correctly remembering, um, also, uh we've been looking at, um, accessibility, which the, uh, one of the members of the public pointed out, um, so, um that is going to be really, uh, a- as a part of a wider project for accessibility, including uh, new improved website, motion sensor lighting, front door intercom system. Uh, a decision has to be made on whether the lift will be put under repair or whether we would consider a stairlift. So once I present that whole project to you, you can make decisions, because you'll have the full costings. Um, and, um, obviously liaising with the heritage officer at Breckland District Council is quite vital, because uh, a- any improvements that you make, they would have to oversee anything that you're putting in which is a new structure. Anything that is already existent that you're repairing wouldn't necessarily have to have their input. Um, with regard to little more kindness, there'll be the container, uh, which will be delivered on the sixth of March, so that's good news, because the ladies can get going on their project, they're chomping at the bit to to actually, uh, operate from there, so, um, the, uh, electrics will be put in on, uh, the next day, and then they will be able to sort of like ha- have access to it, um, after that point, and then get going whenever they like, so I think we might find that they'll be operating much more often than they are when they're in town halls, which would be a real advantage for everyone in the town. Um, neighborhood planner won't go into, because, um, Ed has already referred to that, as he did with the cemetery land, um. Just, uh, I won't bore you with the details of, um, what plots we have in the allotments, but there is um, obviously, they're still an important part of our working life and they're valued, so, um you know, we, we, what we have done recently is, is to split large allotment plots into two. That makes more allotment plots available to people, and that's been quite a success, so we've been really pleased with the uptake on that, and it has reduced the waiting list, um. The emergency plan, um, that was enacted because of, um, we had a power cut, as most of you know, of, for half the town. Um, even though there weren't many people that came, the service was offered there, so we turned out and offered the warmth and a hot drink, and probably a chat as well if they wanted. Um, the open spaces workshop is an ongoing, um, project, um, but we are, um sort of like focusing on three particular areas that we thought are in urgent need of development. Um, as well as, um, we've got, uh, well, Birch Drive, we're looking at as a pla- place to quietly reflect. Um, Blackthorn Road, uh, we're going to be taking ownership of that, so there will be an orchard planted in there, because we've already got the funding and it's agreed. Um, and we've got seventy three thousand of section one O six money to develop that, it's quite a large area, so I although it sounds a lot of money, that would probably soon eaten up, w- within whatever, um, councillors want to do to develop it. Um, St Edmund's Place, um, we're taking ownership of that, so decisions have to be made on how, how we make use of that. Um, Jubilee Wood, sorry, Decoy Common, um, we are gonna have some more engagement with Norfolk Wildlife Trust, and still to be done is to sort of loo- look at the fencing, which hopefully now the weather is a bit better, we can further that. Jubilee Wood, um, that is, and again, an ongoing, very exciting project, again, um we will be, um, having to look at the boring bits, which is the variation of obligation, which is changing the title of the Jubilee Land from what it was, which was cemetery land and allotments. Um, but also the wider, two wider wedges, um, we also have to just make sure that the school um, have input into how that is titled as well, um, and then Lowman Road, we have a ski, we have three schemes that councillors now need to assess, so I'm going to sort of propose just bringing all the open spaces workshop together, um. Obviously, uh, we want to sort of link them with the, uh, development partnership, they'd be at a road development town plan. But I think the next stage, just to let you know what I'm thinking, is that we do a sort of like a consultation on uh, particularly Blackthorn Road, um, Jubilee Wood and Lowman Road. And now that I've got the schemes for Lowman Road, for instance, it would be nice for the public to have a look at them and tell us what they prefer. Give some input into what's, what's else is needed, what you, they don't want or whatever. So I might be arranging sort of like a consultation, whether it's in the town hall or whether it's in a different location. I've sort of liaised with you and, and any suggestions, but I'm sort of thinking um, to sort of bring it, if the weather is good, we could perhaps bring it, um, into the town square. Which is, you know, lo- lovely, because people are passing by, and it's very hard to get people to come into a building when you've got a consultation going, so I've got some thoughts, but if you've got them, please say. Um, and I won't go into the human resources bit, which is obviously, we've, we've covered that bit with the peninsula. Um, we are meeting with the football club, uh, to arrange, um, to discuss matters relating to the lease, um. We've got some, um, technical issues on lease, um, but also, um, I'm trying to desperately get the scouts li- scouts lease, not scouts lease, um, sorted, so that, um, that obviously is finalized, that is having an, an impact in scout, I believe, so I would like to really speed that up. And then we've got D Day, councillors making the beacon available, and we're sort of like keeping tabs on what the Royal British Legion are doing with their um, their sort of like, uh, celebrations, and, um they will be installing Tommy silhouettes in Queen's Square. Then I'm working on just looking at the whole of the wheel park, um. Get, I'm gathering quotes regarding fencing, high fencing, C C T V, and an autoclose mechanism, and we've also looked at signage, which we have addressed, so, um I'm still working on it, but, um, obviously trying to get three contractors for each element of that does take time, but I'm, I'm getting very close to being able to present that, um, and then the athletics club, we've, um, or the town council has approved a new storage container for gavers. So that's it really, sorry, it's a bit, that's the first one, maybe the second one that I do next month, where it'll be so long.
Thank you, it's, it's anyone got me? We resource blocking, so.
You have a good one, yeah. Besides which, we had the power lines go down today in the cemetery, didn't we, so.
Yeah, we did.
That's interesting.
Maybe it's been, yeah, so many different, into so many different checks.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Well, I'm also intrigued, as opposed to like, would it be open tomorrow or not?
I should have, I think it's open, yeah, it was open at about three thirty when I went there, and all the signage had been taken down, so the three lines were back in place, so I thought that looked encouraging, yeah.
It's small, but.
Great.
But can I just say thank you for, for good dates?
No worries.
It's a lot going on, and you and the team are obviously on, which is, which is good.
The team are on it.
And also in councillors that are involved, certainly, no, again, I'm. Um. Moving on to item ten, correspondence, and all the quest from Ununfortunately, damaged meadow on Saturday. For the sense of your lives, I'm talking. Anyone got me? News. I could see, in open space, that's encouraged, community witnesses, what I need to use and get everyone.
Oh, yes, yes. True, Henry, the chart, but not just the guy Charlie.
Hope not.
No, well, it's, 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 yes, we reason.
Yes, please.
I was just, I say, it seems, uh, by, in their letter, that they've already spoken with the football club, because it says that Bill Fives the pitch will be there during previous weekend, so obviously there'll be no home matches that day that are clutch.
No, yeah, I mean, they would liaise with them, wouldn't we, but I, I can liaise as well.
So.
What about, uh, Bounty Castle, um? Uh, are we all happy that a bounty castle is gonna be on there?
So.
On safety, yeah.
As long as it's included, health and safety.
Can, can I just update on that? We looked into bounty castles when we had the Jubilee celebrations. And our insurance company wasn't happy about it. Um, but if there was bounty castles, they had to be run by an authorized company who provided and supervises to stay with them at all times, so that their insurance covered it. If you just hire a bounty castle.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it was difficult, and that's why we didn't have one of the Jubilee.
No, good point, maybe, I'm, I'm working on the assumption that's, whatever they do, it's, it is created legally, insurance, whatever, I think what we're saying in principle, if you want to use gamers.
Well, absolutely.
Yes.
I think we should ask that they do what we ask everybody to do, provide us with their risk assessment and their insurance cover, because that's what we ask everybody else to do, so.
Yeah.
I think that.
Our insurance company won't like it, will they?
No, but if they've got their own insurance.
Yes, it should be.
You've got someone like that, it's a second, isn't it, so, yeah.
Yeah, but if they've got their own, own insurance company.
And their own risk assessment.
Yeah.
I shouldn't imagine.
But it doesn't harm to give a call to our insurance company to make sure they're happy, that they've got insurance, and I believe.
Insurance company must be, because we have the carpool on the record, and they have stuff, and the fair has their bounty slums and stuff.
Oh, yeah, that's true, yeah.
So I think as long as they're running, and their own risk assessments, and we're supplied with copies.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay, so can, sorry, wait, yes.
It was just the kind of, obviously, if they're doing their fun side tour, that would be a topic. I just wonder, you know, there'll be a lot of noise and stuff for the local residents, are they intending to use the bottom field?
Um. I, I think that they can be in one place, aren't they? They're cording off the bit of the, the gamers, so I, I've checked it, it shouldn't be the top end, yeah, not, not where the football pitches are, or the, yeah.
I think that's.
Yeah, I believe so, because they're gonna cordon off their bit, and they're gonna have access into their, with their staff only, so.
Yeah, finish is eight o'clock, and they won't be playing behind the side of the pub, but they, but they finish yours, they should finish at eight o'clock, it says.
Yeah, and they will have wristbands for their staff, so they won't let anyone into their area who hasn't got a wristband on, should imagine, so. Yeah, I can double check that.
Okay, so can I ask if we're happy um, and support these things, um, just someone wants to pose that, taking on board council attorneys.
I did, we followed through what Hans of Taylor said, I'm happy to propose it, on the understanding that we see the risk assessment being insured.
Yeah.
Mr John Taylor, can I vote, please, thank you very much.
Yeah, you know.
Okay, then, let's get the correspondence, and the, we're done for from twenty twenty four. I've been too long, it's. There's another comment, I think, I've got a great chance of not remembering. Any comments? Again, I think it's community thing, you know, fantastic.
Yeah, they're one minute, they're doing it. I'm, you're just, you're better, because I can't, that's a long, long, I'll check on that meeting.
Long time. Not put up there and said, you know, just. I'm not what we, 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 we. Thank you, thank you, it's good thing, it's good thing.
Do you want a short, nice stamp, this is, it's March, you've got to notify.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very.
Very long.
Oh, very.
We'll do what we can. Yeah, um. Okay, um, item eleven, public participation. Now, oh, yes, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Assuming you've still got the will to live. Yes, Miss.
Same, to, part of four, I'd hear it, by the way. Um, the allotments, we're splitting the large ones, have we given any thought to community allotments? Off the back of maybe splitting the larger ones, just thought. And, and that's, well. The orchard, Blackthorn?
Yeah.
Um, any chance whenever you get in the community involved with that, do a community tree plant? Bit of engagement again.
Yeah, that, that will hopefully be part of the consultation, so hopefully we'll get, you know, people
Yeah.
ready to come forward, yeah, absolutely.
So, no, good idea, good idea, all for it. And again, the same principle with Jubilee Woodlands, so that's a bit of land beyond the academy, you know, talking with the academy of how can you get the curriculum involved in terms of sustainability, environment, biology, et cetera, et cetera, and they're all for it, so.
Personally, speaking, if you know that, where you can draw a community. If they don't turn up, then that's their own fault, but.
No, that's, they're really, they're really keen to do that, so, that's good. Yes, sorry, you're not.
No, 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 I was asking a friend of mine, who, who said that the chickens that went to the allotment here, is there any chance of putting any down at, um, the grove or allotments? Because otherwise, they've got to go all the way up there, back them up, and tame them, so is there any chance of getting any of the, the groves and allotments?
Yeah, I should imagine so, yeah, yeah, when they get their next batch, I'll suggest that they put some, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
Um, can I just check the council, McKinnon, about actual dates for the books, so.
Yeah.
I think she's, I've been asked tonight, I don't know, it's only on the top of my head, but I will not check, no, I really.
You have fourteen, fourteen fifteen sixteen.
It is April.
Eight, Samson.
Oh, well, that one, um, setting up on Thursday, the eleventh, and then we will be open Friday the twelfth, Saturday the thundety, and Sunday the thirteenth. Thank you so much.
And again, thank you very much for
No, no, no.
taking the lead on that, it's, it, it is a big job, and it has been successful.
Well, that's it, and what um, was useful was the money we raised, we were able to dip into straight away to help the people, keep flooding, because we then didn't have to go to the full council, and it, it made it all worthwhile.
And it was a very local thing, it wasn't, it really, really supported the community, so.
No, thank you. Anyone else?
Their opinion is animal development, part three, I'm, but my father, is it quite active? Or not?
We're trying to get a date for the next meeting, aren't we? That's our sticking point, it will be once we get to meet.
I personally, I've not been involved in it, um. I think it is a kind of a bit of a slow burner, I think, I think the concept, we, you know, I, I, I personally support the concept of it, and we've been trying to do that for a long time, um, I think it'll just. Um, I think it'll just take time to evolve and develop. I'm the nerd person who's, um. Working on the A D P in in Asbury is very enthusiastic and what I've used, so. Um, but I I can't give anyone dates.
And it does it there?
That they, well, they think they'll be able to get a meeting in in sort of like mid-April, where fingers crossed, so.
When was the last?
Um, I can't tell you that because I wasn't on the council, but I'd have to get back to you on that one.
You would have known the last one. You would have known the last one, you were probably there years ago. What we do here.
I think I think we need to use the. The model, you know, going forward, so I mentioned earlier, excuse me, with neighborhood plan and the local plan and what I've used, you know. The A D P is kind of conduit in the middle, held that, so. But we need to make it work, you're quite, quite right, but I. Yeah, I've I've not been involved in any meetings on that. Anyone else? No? Okay, thank you very much. I'm doing this in record time, um, items to next agenda.
Um, co options for the two vacancies. Um, open spaces.
Be louder.
Uh, co options. Which will be on the next meeting and open spaces consultation, I might have some information about how that's going to be arranged.
Does anyone else want to announce? Next agenda. Um, okay, um, just just on that, it said, um, early on in the meeting, what I'd like to do. Under terms rights, pull it easier to get the neighborhood plan brief and cemetery feasibility, land brief approved and count. If that's okay. Thank God for being such a good guy, that. Date of next meeting.
Eighth of April.
Thank you. Um. Item fourteen, exclusion of fact of the public past revolution, excluding fact of public funding meeting. Being sensitive nature of business to be discussed. Sorry, not in person, but.
Yeah.
That's good, thanks, Taylor. Approved, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you all very much, and we appreciate it.